...of January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Here.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Centers is here. President Burton.
Here. We have a quorum. The purpose of tonight's special meeting is for the Board of Education to elect our officers, as we do on an annual basis in January. We will have this brief item on our agenda, and then we, following the business of this special meeting, we will be commencing with our general meeting, or voting meeting, as we call it, starting at seven o'clock. If this meeting runs a few minutes over, we will take a couple of minute break between the two. If you are following along with an agenda, they can be found at the table outside the doorway. If you're at home and you would like an agenda, they can be found on our website, which is If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to agendas and follow along with us this evening. The next item on our agenda is Item Two, Audience Communications. I do not have any blue slips. Is anyone in the audience wishing to participate in Audience Communications for this short special meeting this evening? There will be another opportunity to participate in Audience Communications if you choose to do so at the regular meeting also. Seeing none, we're going to go to the next item on our agenda, which is Item Three, Election of Officers. For clarity for both the public and the Board, although the Board has received information on this ahead of time, this will be the process that we will utilize for the election of officers. The President, which is myself, will open nominations from the floor. We will do that in order of office, from the President, the Vice President, and then the Secretarial Position for the Board. Any Board member can make nominations. A nomination does not need a second. After a nomination has been made, I will be repeating the name of the individual who is nominated. I will verify that they are wishing to serve or willing to serve in that capacity. Then I will check to see if there are any other nominations for that office. When there are no further nominations, I will close the nominations for that office, and a vote will be taken at that time. We will begin with the Office of President. Are there any, looking for nominations for the Office of President? I'm going to let folks know this. I will be nominating Mark Johnson for President of the Board of Education. I have very much enjoyed my service over the last three years as President of the Board. However, I do believe, and I've stated this to our Board, and we've had discussion about it in the study session and Committee of the Whole, I do believe that it's healthy for any Board to move that position around every now and then. I don't necessarily believe that everybody should be in every office, because we do need to serve in the areas in which we have strengths, and not every office is in the, either the interest or the strength of every individual. I have, as I said, I have very much enjoyed my time. It has been my honor, truly, to serve as President of this Board of Education with these fine individuals who are sitting before you. That being said, I do think that it's healthy for us to change that up a little bit, and I will be nominating Mark Johnson for the role of President for this coming school year, or coming calendar year, rather. Mr. Johnson, are you willing and interested in serving in that role?
I am. Thank you, President Burton.
Are there comments on Mark Johnson for President of the Board of Education that anyone would wish to share at this time? Folks may or may not, we've had discussions about this over the last couple of meetings, but if there are any comments, I'd like to hear them. Okay. Are there other nominees for President for the Board of Education? All right. Mark Johnson has been nominated for President of the Board of Education. Seeing no other nominations coming forward, I will now close the motion, or close the nominations, rather, for President of the Board. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes. Motion passes. I thank you, Mark, for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
You have served in the past in this role and have done a phenomenal job, have served this Board well, and it's, it will be our honor to have you lead this Board and be the spokesperson of our, of our group. We appreciate it.
Thank you for those words. I appreciate it.
At this time, I'm opening nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there nominations for Vice President?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
I nominate Mrs. Burton as Vice President.
Thank you. If that is a office that my Board would wish me to serve in, I would be happy to do so. Are there other nominations for Vice President of the Board? Seeing none, we will close the nominations for Vice President, and I will ask Secretary Dan Centers to take the role, please.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes. Motion passes. We will now open nominations for the Secretary of the Board of Education. Are there nominations for Secretary?
Mr. Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
I would nominate Tammy Bonnefield for Secretary.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Seeing no other nominations, we have Tammy Bonnefield nominated for Secretary. I will now close the nominations and ask Secretary Dan Centers to take the role.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. President Burton.
Yes. And the motion passes. This Board of Education does technically have a fourth office, that of Treasurer. It is with great joy that I tell you that we have policy that takes those duties and hands them to Mrs. Allison Smith on behalf of the Board of Education. We are, we recognize her skills far exceed that of this Board collectively in that role, although we do have some folks on our Board, such as Mrs. Bonnefield, with accounting background. We are very glad that Mrs. Smith takes care of that role for us. That is the last item on our agenda. We are now going to adjourn until seven o'clock, at which time we will begin our general or voting meeting. We are now adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education for January twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson? Sorry. Mrs. Burton?
Here.
It takes a while, folks.
Yeah, we'll get in heaven.
I'll figure it out.
That's it. We have a quorum. We have a quorum, thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're supposed to stay there.
Mr. Centers, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to everyone in the audience tonight. For those of you who are here and want to follow along, we have agendas on the table outside of the door to the right. We also have our blue slips for Audience Communication out there as well. Just as a starting note, we're going to take a short break after Item Three D to honor some of the individuals who are going to be here tonight, particularly from the Trade Center. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Mrs. Burton for her leadership over the last three years. As I know full well, it's not easy to sit in this chair, and to do it for three years in a row is outstanding, and she led us through some difficult times, so I just want to say thank you for doing that for us, and again, for your willingness to serve as Vice President. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you. It has truly been my honor to serve this wonderful group of people. It's, and I will miss it some of the time, and some of the time, I'll be glad that you're sitting in that seat now. But thank you to my Board, who has so wonderfully supported myself and all of the officers and all of the, all of our fellow Board members. Thank you.
It's, it's interesting, because although I served for two years before Mrs. Burton, I learned a lot from my predecessor, and I'm sure Mrs. Burton learned a lot from what I did, and you never stop learning, because over the last three years, I've learned a lot from what she's done. And hopefully, I will carry on that, and we will continue to grow as a Board. Tonight's meeting is a regular meeting, and as Mrs. Burton has said in the past, you're not going to see as much discussion tonight on the items that come before the Board, because generally, each of these items have been discussed by the Board on at least two occasions before. If you really want to see what goes on and listen to those discussions, we offer the videos from the Committee of the Whole. You can either come in person or go on our website, and you can see all of those. That's where you'll see a lot more of the discussion on the particular items that come before the Board, so we encourage you to read those. Mrs. Burton also started, I think, in November to indicate to you that one of the goals this year of the Board is to work on respect. And we're talking about respect throughout the community that includes student to student, parent to parent, teacher to teacher, student to teacher, and we've given the commitment from this Board that we will follow that. No, there's no greater way to show our students and our children, by leading by example, and that's what we intend to do from this Board, and you have our commitment that everyone that comes before this Board will be treated with the utmost respect, and we expect that people who address this Board will address us with respect as well. We all need to work on it and set an example for our children. With that, we will go into our communications, which is Item Three, and our first one is recognition of Board Members for School Board Recognition Month. Mrs. Jenkins.
Good evening. Good evening, President Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Oquist. Alone, we can do so little, but together, we can do so much. So were the words of Helen Keller. Her words were exemplified, are exemplified, in this room tonight, and our district leadership, and our district staff member, members, and our LPS constituents, and in the seven members that make up the Lavonia Public Schools Board of Education. Each January brings a new year and a new opportunity to say thank you to our Board members, as we join more than six hundred school districts across the state to say we appreciate you. As members of the Board of Education, you are among more than four thousand elected community volunteers statewide, who serve on local schools, local school boards, and who give freely of your time and talents to benefit students, staff, and the community. Our district is very fortunate to have a group of Board members who take the public trust and responsibility of this role very seriously. Members of this Board dedicate an enormous number of hours preparing for and participating in Board meetings, where they're faced with decisions that are often challenging and some that are often quite difficult. In an era of unprecedented choice in education and funding, and education and funding constraints that never seem to end, school boards are tasked with charting, charting a course that provides long-term, sustainable success for current and future students. Board members here in LPS are charged with the oversight of a roughly one hundred and fifty million dollar budget that provides for approximately two thousand employees and more than fourteen thousand students in twenty-four schools. It's a huge responsibility and one that, that each of you take very seriously. We can see your dedication, your enthusiasm, your thoroughness, and your heart. Your work here is a labor of love, and that is evident. We can see your pride as you visit our schools, as you cheer on our teams, and applaud our students' accomplishments. We see your dedication when you're serving up pizza at the Bounce Back to School event, or taking a, taking a front row seat at a student performance. It's that Lavonia pride that makes our school district shine, and we're thankful that the Board of Education is a large source of that pride. This year, our Board has earned the distinct, the distinguished title of Honorary Board, meaning that all seven Board members are certified through the Michigan Association of School Boards. Not every district can boast this accomplishment, which is only achieved after many, many hours of M A S B courses. Congratulations to each of you on this amazing achievement. I would now like to read a resolution from the Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency's Board of Education. This is a resolution that was adopted by the Wayne Reeser Board on December twentieth, two thousand seventeen. Whereas the Board, the Boards of Education of, of the thirty-three constituent school districts of Wayne County promote quality education for all children attending their school, their local schools, and whereas these committed public servants demonstrate dedication to their civic duty and voluntarily contribute countless hours of service on behalf of the students of Wayne County and their communities, and whereas Wayne County school boards are strong advocates for the needs of, of their students and their communities, and with policymakers in Lansing and Washington, and whereas Wayne County school boards regularly do all they can to ensure academic success for all Wayne County schools, and whereas Wayne County school board members support and participate in both community and school events, volunteering their time and resources, and whereas Wayne County school boards understand the importance of a quality education for its youth, and recognize that this is the most important factor in the success of our local communities, state, and country, and whereas, excuse me, whereas local control continues to play a vital role in the success of public education, and whereas the State of Michigan and the State Board of Education have declared January two thousand eighteen as School Board Recognition Month. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency, Board of Education, in the spirit of the School Board Recognition Month theme, "School Boards Lead Strong," recognizes, celebrates, and commends the dedication, contributions, and leadership of the Wayne County School Boards of Education, presented and adopted on December twentieth, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins.
You're welcome. And now I'd like to present each of you, if I may, President Johnson, with a certificate, which reads, "School Board Recognition Month, January two thousand eighteen, in appreciation of your dedication to our children and public education in Michigan." I have one for each, if I may.
Thank you. You may.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy.
Now, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Oquist, who also has a few words to say about, about you guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, and you've highlighted so many of the things that really make our Board just an exceptional group of community members to represent the students of Lavonia Public Schools. One thing I think most, most folks may not realize is this truly is a labor of love. This is a volunteer effort on behalf of the seven individuals who have been elected to represent Lavonia Public Schools, and one thing I have found in my time, not only in this role, but in the twenty-eight years I've, I've been in this district, is that we have been very fortunate to have individuals who truly are committed to the, to this important work, and it really is tireless. So you may see them here at the Board meetings every week, but beyond that, you know, just last week, we had our Board members celebrating our middle school students at the Young Inventors Showcase, and celebrating at the LPTSA Reflection Ceremony, and, and many, many other events throughout the year. But even more importantly, what I have found is their commitment to making decisions that are in the best interest of our students, our staff, and our community is evident in their preparation, in their questions, in, in all of the work that they do outside of these meetings, in addition to, to what you give and, and what you think and what you do during these meetings. So we are so grateful for that. We are excited this spring to officially recognize you as an Honor Board. That truly is a very unique honor for a school board, to have every single one of their Board members have gone through such extensive training to be considered certified Board members. So just as members of our, our staff and our team continue to get updated through professional development, and as has our Board, and you've been a role model for that. I just want to take a moment and thank President Burton, as she concludes her time as, as President. She really has been an outstanding example of leadership for all of us. Colleen, you lead with heart, clarity, and an unwavering commitment to our students, our staff, and our district. You truly have been a role model to all of us, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist.
You're welcome.
Comments from the Board? Mr. Centers.
We sometimes have the opportunities to go around and talk to other Board members, and what's obvious to me is that we are all very fortunate to serve in Lavonia Public Schools, where our teachers, our staff, our administrators always do things that make us proud. This is an amazing district that does extraordinary things for kids every day, so for us to be up here, you know, it's, it sometimes seems very easy because of all the people that work for Lavonia Public Schools, so thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Any other comments or questions? Would I echo Mr. Centers? What the, the public sees is us. We're the visual part of the, the team, but we have just a tremendous cabinet and the administrative team. We are a team. We couldn't do what we do without them, so thank you for everything that you do for us. You get us the information that we need. You answer our questions. It really is a team effort, and we appreciate that very, very much. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to Item Three B, LPS Points of Pride: Skilled Trades Program at Lavonia Career Technical Center. Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you, President Johnson. During the latter part of last school year, we began a new feature called Points of Pride, which is a special presentation about a program or a special offering in our school district. The idea is to raise awareness of all of our excellent programs that allow our students to truly shine. Tonight, we are featuring the skilled trades courses that are offered at the Lavonia Career Technical Center, specifically the automotive technology and the construction trades programs. Before I introduce our guest this evening, I would like to inform the Board and the community of some very exciting news. LPS has received a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Margaret Dunning Foundation, which is an area nonprofit organization established by Ms. Margaret Dunning in nineteen ninety-seven. The grant will be used to support equipment upgrades in the Auto Tech Program at the Career Center. Specifically, the grant will be used to purchase up-to-date diagnostic scanners, as well as a tire changer, wheel balancer, and a brake lathe. This equipment will provide our high school students with the proper tools they need to complete the tasks in our Auto Tech Lab, and will provide them with the experience and up-to-date technology they will need to work in the automotive industry. We are grateful for this generous grant, and we're excited to see the, these upgrades occur in this program. At this time, I'd like to introduce LCTC Principal Joe Anderson, who will introduce staff members and students, who will speak about both, both programs. And while they're doing that, I will have a slideshow with some photos of the kids -- in action on the screen. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Superintendent Oakley, members of the board, and cabinet members. A pleasure to be here this evening to highlight our program. We are obviously very, very happy about the foundation grant that we were able to procure, and Mr. Ososki has already put the wheels in motion. We've already ordered all of the materials, and we hope to have them in soon so that this year's students will be able to benefit from being able to use them. We have the two programs, as we mentioned, at the Career Center that most fit the idea of skilled trades, the automotive and the construction technology programs. And as you know, the governor and the State Department of Education has been very supportive of skilled trades because of the upside that there is in terms of career opportunities and earning potential, and the high demand for workers in the state of Michigan in skilled trades programs. So we're very happy to be able to contribute and to move students forward in those areas as well. I don't want to steal any of the thunder of what the staff members and students are going to speak about, but I will tell you that both of these programs in the past three years have been running at capacity. We've taken, luckily, it's just been about perfect, and we've actually been able to incorporate a few students from out district that we're able to get. So we're not turning away anybody, but we're right there and we're full. And I think that talks to not only the programs themselves, but also the instructors and the reputations that they have for running successful and engaging programs in automotive and construction. So again, at this time, without any further ado, I'm going to introduce Mr. Greg Ososki, our automotive technology instructor.
Hi, I'm Greg Ososki. I'm the automotive technology teacher at the Career Center. Thank you for having us here tonight, we appreciate it. Once again, like was mentioned before, this has been a really exciting year for us. I was approached by Mr. Anderson earlier in the year about a potential grant. We did a lot of hustling around, and late December, or early December, we found out that we were, in fact, going to receive the grant for $50,000. So this is great. The equipment that we're going, which was mentioned before, is we needed updated scanners for cars, so we're going to get three brand-new ones, state-of-the-art, along with a brake lathe, a tire balancer, and a tire machine. The reason I chose these particular pieces of equipment was because when a student would leave my program and go out into the public, what they're going to use is this particular types of equipment. I have spent many, many hours researching this and going to places and finding out what they're using in the field, and so that's why I chose these pieces of equipment. This has a really great impact on the students because they're learning on what they're going to use out in the field. And as, if you're not aware of it, skilled trades, Mr. Martin will tell you the same thing, high demand for automotive technicians, high demand for carpenters. So the programs that we're offering to our students is really beneficial to them and can lead to some really high-paying jobs down the road. The new equipment is going to help with everything that we need to have done to get these kids on the right track, and Livonia Public Schools and now the Margaret Dunning Foundation are taking a lead in supporting the automotive program at the Career Center, and myself and the students are really grateful for that. I feel supported here. I've been here, this is my third year, and I've felt very supported since day one, so I thank you for that. So, without further ado, I have been blessed in my teaching career with really great students, and I brought two of them here today. I would like to introduce Maddie, she's one of my second-year students, and Sean, one of my first-year students. So Maddie, if you'd like to come on up.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Maddie Laurentius, and I'm a part of the Livonia Career Technical Center of the Advanced Auto Program. This class is by far my favorite class. It benefits you in many ways, such as making new friends from many different new schools, as well as furthering my knowledge and passion for working on vehicles. This class has taught me a range of things on how to work on air filters, but also far as welding. I now currently work at Detroit Hot Rod, thanks to Mr. O. by helping me get into that. I use skills and techniques that Mr. O. has taught me every single day for the past two years that I've been in his class. I intend on going into Northwestern Ohio to become a master technician, and hopefully one day open my own shop, hot rod shop. This class is most essential in students by letting them follow their passions in hopes of one day being able to reach their dream career. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sean Myastowski, I'm part of the LCTC Auto Program. This program has benefited me in many ways. I came into the program knowing a lot about cars. However, Mr. O. has taught me about how the parts that I'm taking off work, and I intend on going to the University of Northwestern Ohio, otherwise known as UNO, to continue my goal of becoming an automotive technician, and to someday open my own auto repair shop. I've always had a passion for cars, and this program has really fueled my passion as well. I can't wait to join the automotive field after high school. This class has made me more confident in my technical skills outside of Career Center. The purpose of this class is to be able to teach people how to do certain tasks, of which I am able to do, for example, helping my friends repair a destroyed coolant line in the VFW parking lot.
Thank you.
It seems like every time there's a flat tire, or a dead battery, or a stalled car in the Career Center parking lot, whether it be staff or student, they're always coming to Mr. O. and asking if they can fill the tire, or jump the car, or, "Can you just take a look at this because I can't get it started to get it home?" So what they're saying is true, it happens a lot. Switching gears now, I'd like to move on to the Construction Trades Program, introduce our instructor, Mr. Tim Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you to the board and everyone here. It's a great honor to be here in front of everybody as a point of pride for Livonia Public Schools. I've been working here for 14 years now, in the trades program, and to be here tonight means a lot, especially with the climate in the construction industry right now, with working with these students who are engaged and really potentially going out there into these fields. So, thanks again for having us here tonight. I'm just going to talk a little bit about the programs, I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with them. The Construction 1 program is a pretty comprehensive introductory program where the students are learning all the introductory skills into all the facets of construction, so they get a taste of every single trade that there is out there, including civil and construction. Everything starts with safety. They go through carpentry, electrical plumbing, heating and cooling, green building, you name it, it's in that program. And those students get a chance to really take a bite out of something that they haven't been exposed to in some of the other programs, and it's big jobs in our industry right now. The second-year program, the two students that are here tonight that are in the Construction Trades 2 program, it's the advanced program, that, we're in partnership with the city of Livonia's housing department. Every year, we're fortunate enough for them to turn over a house to us, and we fully renovate and remodel and do whatever the house needs to be to be put back on the market, and sold or rent it out through their housing department. So, the picture's up on the screen right now, you can see some of the work that students have done on the last year's house, and it's anything from fully demolishing the inside of the house, redoing all mechanicals, in partnership with some of my subcontractors that come in and work with us, and work with the students, drywall, electrical, painting, you name it, whatever the house needs, they're doing. And to incorporate the more, I guess, the technical side of it, in that program, in the last three to five years, I'd say I've incorporated the 60-hour pre-licensure course for their residential builder's license, and a 30-hour OSHA's safety certification, which is pretty much the nation's standard for safety for them to be on any job site. So our seniors are graduating with the certificate to go test out to be a licensed contractor in the state of Michigan, and they're fully safety certified. So they're pretty huge accomplishments, and a lot of our students are going out right now and going in, they can name their job pretty much leaving our programs, which is a great thing. Some of our students that are here today, they're going to go into apprenticeships and go on to major universities for construction management, which I'm going to introduce right now. So I mean, I thank you for your support, and especially to be a point of pride, it's a great honor, and I hope to keep working here. I'm going to introduce Allison Kow, she's a senior from Stevenson, and our second-year student at the Career Center.
What do you think?
Hello. My name is Allison Kow. I'm a senior at Stevenson High School. When I joined the Construction Trades Program, I had a very small idea of what I was getting myself into. I will say, I do not regret joining, though. I originally joined the program with the idea that I wanted to learn the basics of home building so that the following year I could proceed on to the architectural design class. But lo and behold, I ended up falling in love with the construction class and continued on to the second year. Mr. Martin and Mr. Lester are wonderful teachers, and they have expanded my horizons, not only in the classroom, but also into the construction industry and community. After doing all the hands-on work with our first-year projects, I ended up realizing that I have a passion to pursue a career as an electrician. As a second-year student, I have gained wonderful experiences remodeling this year's house, specifically doing the electrical work. I have learned many things about building codes and practices from working side-by-side with my teachers. I plan on applying for an apprenticeship with the Electrical Union and working towards becoming a master electrician. All I can say is that I can't wait to continue on after high school and pursue a career in the electrical industry. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that second student we have is Mr. Giovanni Agazi. I'll let you take your time.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Giovanni Agazi, go to Livonia Stevenson. I'm also in Mr. Martin and Mr. Lester's Construction Trades Class. This class has taught me how to cooperate and work with others in the real world, opposed to just being in a regular classroom with others. And with the 30-hour OSHA and the 60-hour building license, it's something I won't have to take when I go to Ferris State and study construction management, and hopefully one day become a superintendent or take over a family masonry company. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy went, but that's, oh, just wrap up, and again, thank you for allowing us to be here and get a little bit of a taste of the success stories that our students have, and we could have brought a boatload of kids because they all do a really great job in the work that they do on the house, and the work that they do with the automotive is really tremendous. So again, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, and I don't know if you guys have any questions, or we need to move on probably.
Any questions?
Can I answer questions from the board? Thank you for coming. It's great to hear from you guys. You've had a really nice time.
When I first came on the Board of Education, as much as I knew about Livonia Public Schools, I had no idea how unique the Livonia Career Technical Center was. I just assumed that most large districts had something similar, and found out through a lot of experience with other board members across the state that this is a very, very unique program. So we thank you, Mr. Anderson, to our teachers in this program. Thank you so much for usually coming out of the industries you're working in to work in education and teach our kids how to do this and go forward. We hear all the time how we need more people in the skilled trades, and it's wonderful to have this opportunity right in our own backyard. And for those folks who, it's not very common anymore, but occasionally I still come upon someone who thinks that teachers just work nine to three, and I don't know if you caught in there, but one of our teachers is out after hours checking with folks in the industry, finding out what specific pieces of equipment they need in order to make this a more meaningful experience for our students. So thank you so much for all that you do outside of school to make sure that in-school hours are so terrific.
Did you have something?
I did, but I'll let Mrs. Jarvis.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. Right now, if you talk to anyone in public education, a current catchphrase is college and career readiness. In Livonia, it's not just a catchphrase, it's reality, and it's a program like this that makes that happen. I especially like to see Maddie and Allison stepping forward into roles that are not traditionally roles held by females. You go, girls.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis.
So, you know, I just wanted to thank you all for being here tonight, and, you know, Joe, for your passion for this program. We know you're so proud of each and every one of the programs that we have to offer. And Tim and Greg, it is evident that you are passionate about the work that you're doing, and you are doing such important work, and I have to tell you, just last week, I was having a conversation with some colleagues about their offerings in CTE, and one of their greatest challenges were finding professionals in the field who were able to also be teachers of that profession. And you really are both great examples of blending both of those things, your expertise from the field, as well as your ability to impart that knowledge and ignite that passion in our kids. So we're so grateful to have both of you and your colleagues at the Career Technical Center. And so Maddie and Sean and Allison and Giovanni, you made us proud tonight. We love that our students have the opportunity from all three high schools to begin to explore these career options and decide if it's for you or if it's not for you. And for all four of you, it sounds like it's for you, and I bet for some of the students that you've had in the past, maybe they found out it's not for them, and that's okay, too, because before they go on to the next stages of their career, or, you know, schooling beyond high school, you have a pretty good idea once you've left either the Career Intern Program or the Livonia Career Technical Center, if this is a right fit for you. And so you are just great examples of what we have to offer, and we're so proud of each and every one of you, so best of luck to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley.
You're welcome.
The, we are so fortunate to have this kind of a program available to our students, and we are just as equally fortunate to have instructors that are so passionate about what you do and can pass that along to our students. Anybody who's been watching what's been going on recently with the Auto Show, one of the big things is the Bullitt Mustang. I recently acquired a Bullitt Mustang. So I'm suggest-
I think Maddie and Sean are likely to take a look at it.
I may need some pointers, so if you guys are available, I'd be more than happy to talk to you.
Bring it on over.
Soon as the weather gets nice, we'll do that. It's under wraps right now.
Take it for a ride.
Well, thank you again, we appreciate it. Mrs. Jenkins.
Thanks for another great point of pride, Mr. Jarvis.
My pleasure.
Absolutely. All right, that will move us on to Item 3C, Healthy Livonia Initiative. Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you, President Johnson. See, I'm getting good at this already.
It's hard to get that out.
President Johnson? Yes. We'll get used to it. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present information about a really great partnership between the school district, the city of Livonia, Livonia Parks and Recreation, St. Mary Mercy Hospital, and the Livonia Chamber of Commerce. It's called Healthy Livonia, a name we hope will soon become a household name throughout the community. Healthy Livonia is simple. It's all about teaming up to make Livonia a healthier place to live, learn, work, and play. Under the leadership of St. Mary Mercy Livonia, which has committed $200,000 per year for the first five years, Healthy Livonia aims to create and maintain a health-supportive environment and a good quality of life for all people in the Livonia community, with a focus on youth, senior citizens, parks, and infrastructure. I'm going to attempt to run my slideshow while I'm doing my presentation. There we go, good. In Livonia, or, I'm sorry, in July of 2016, a steering committee was formed to begin broad discussions on how to move the initiative forward. Serving on the steering committee are the following, and I know that we have one, two committee members present, so I will point those out as we go through the list. On the steering committee, we have David Spivey, CEO of St. Mary Mercy Livonia, Michaeline Ratchka, Director of Community Health, St. Mary Mercy Livonia, and Michaeline joins us this evening. Raise your hand. Thanks for being here. Jim Jolly and Scott Barr, Livonia City Council, Dave Varga, Director of Administrative Services, the city of Livonia, Ted Davis, Superintendent, Livonia Parks and Recreation, our very own Dr. Jennifer Terrio, Director of Student Services, Livonia Public Schools. the City of Livonia, Ted Davis, Superintendent, Livonia Parks and Recreation, our very own Dr. Jennifer Terio, Director of Student Services, Livonia Public Schools. They've, Dr. Terio, thank you. And lastly, but certainly not least, Dan West, President of the Livonia Chamber of Commerce. The steering committee developed a mission to energize a community-wide focus on healthy living in Livonia, and the vision, which reads, "Through engaged partnerships, make Livonia the healthiest city in the nation." Other early work of the steering committee entailed pursuing opportunities and initiatives that engage community partners, focusing on the workplace, schools, and community, supporting infrastructure improvements, providing funding for sustainable programs, seeking grants to support the initiatives. Through this work, the steering committee created a list of expected outcomes, which include: creating initiatives that are measurable and support community members living a more healthy and active lifestyle, making healthy Livonia sustainable for 10 years or more through additional funding sources, and growing an active culture of healthy behaviors. The committee considered how the successes could be measured in the following health-related areas: obesity rates, smoking rates, park visitation rates, participation in youth sports, community recognition of Healthy Livonia efforts. After this and plenty more behind-the-scenes work, the steering committee engaged education, business, and government partners, developed a strategic plan, raised 75% of the funding, oversaw two Healthy Livonia pilot programs, and has laid the groundwork for three significant infrastructure projects. One pilot program issued free six-month family memberships to the rec center for 45 selected families in Livonia Public Schools. The second pilot entailed free one-week summer swim lessons at the city's outdoor swimming pools for 100 children. The first infrastructure project is very, very exciting. We've got an image here. There we go. It is a universally accessible playground, which will be built at Rotary Park, thanks to funding from Healthy Livonia through St. Mary Mercy Livonia, and also from a grant from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. This 9,000-square-foot playground will feature swings, ramps, seating, and other play features for children of all abilities, and will tie in with existing amenities at the park. This exciting project could be, could get underway as soon as May. This is kind of breaking news for the community. A community build event is being planned and should be pretty awesome, so stay tuned for that. Other projects in the works include signage at Bicentennial Park and a walking bridge project at Hellman Park, which is located just northwest of Stevenson High School. So, as you can see, there are some amazing things happening with this initiative, and many more are on the horizon. Examples of the work that will continue this year include rolling out Healthy Livonia around the community, just as we're doing here tonight, engaging additional partners, exploring additional funding sources, and continuing work on the three infrastructure projects that were mentioned earlier. And as you can see from the screen, there are several others included as well. But what good would a community partnership such as this be without public awareness? The marketing experts from each Healthy Livonia partner have been meeting for the past few months to find ways to spread the word throughout the community by leveraging each partner's reach. You guessed correctly, if your first thought was social media. Of course, we have a hashtag, #HealthyLivonia, and we would love it if you could help share our Facebook and Twitter posts about the exciting things this group is doing in our community. Watch for #HealthyLivonia on posts, post shares, tweets, and retweets about events, programs, or just everyday activities that promote healthy habits for physical and mental well-being in our community. We are proud to be a part of this initiative and hope that LPS can play a role in turning Livonia into the healthiest city in America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. Questions, comments from the board? Mrs. Burton.
We'd just like to thank the folks who have stepped up to be part of this whole committee. And Michaeline, thank you so much for being with us this evening. When you look at the people on this list, they're generally folks who already have a full plate, but it's very appreciated that you would step up and involve yourself in something like this. It's pretty exciting, especially when they were able to already raise that much funding and put together this universally accessible playground, which we've been hearing about already from a few other sources, which is good. That means your word is getting out.
Right.
Thank you for your efforts.
Any other questions, comments? Mrs. Oakwist.
Thank you, President Johnson. I just wanted to mention, one of the things that we often highlight at our board meetings are the community partnerships that we have. And so, you know, we may highlight a fellow community group or business partner, and this initiative really brings together a number of those. And as you know, our partnership with the City of Livonia, with the Chamber, and St. Mary Mercy are all, Livonia Parks and Rec are all really important partners in whom we're involved in, quite frankly, a number of different activities. And as you know, we always enjoy the recognition of the City of Livonia, as you identified as one of the top 10 places to raise a family, and the zip codes in our area being a draw for families looking to move, you know, to a wonderful place to raise a family. And this is one of those reasons, and just the impact of the passes to the rec center that this group was able to provide, again, the universal playground. And I know last week, we had the pleasure of hearing from a speaker who's working with St. Mary Mercy and Livonia Public Schools, looking to provide support for students and families in crisis because of drug addiction. And so, there's such important work being done. I want to give a shout-out to my colleague and friend, Dave Spivey, at St. Mary Mercy. We serve on Livonia Chamber Board together, and I know he is very committed, as is Michaeline, to this work. And St. Mary Mercy has really done quite a bit to begin with that seed money for this group to work on it. So, I'd like to thank Dr. Terio and Mrs. Jenkins for their work on this committee. As we talk about the communications gurus behind the scenes, Mrs. Jenkins did not mention herself, and she has been a very important part of beginning to promote this work. And really, the goal is to have healthy kids, healthy parents, healthy families. And that really is so important to the future of our community. So, thanks for the effort. We're excited to hear more.
Thank you. I'm sure I'll be back next year with an update.
That's great.
Any other questions or comments? As some of you know, I split my time between the school board and my position on the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, we've been following this for quite some time, and it's a wonderful partnership. I can tell you, we're very excited about the playground equipment going in at Rotary Park. That's gonna be outstanding. We can't wait for it to take place. So, thank you very much for everything you've done, and what a great partnership it's been.
At each of your place settings, we did leave the first annual report for you as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you.
I think we can let you go now.
Okay.
That'll move us on to Item 3D, District Update from the Superintendent. Mrs. Oakwist.
Thanks, President Johnson. I just have a few more highlights to share with you. We've had some great ones here already this evening. I wanted to be sure that our families in our communities are aware that the Michigan Department of Education has released its new dashboard that gives parents and community members information about how local schools are performing, how they're performing in relation to state averages, as well as similarly demographic communities. Just recently, our Chief Academic Officer, Mrs. O'Brien, and our school principals put out a communication to parents, talking about how to access the dashboard, what information is contained within the dashboard, and a little bit about facilitating that. If you have any questions, please contact us here at Central Office. Please contact your child's principal, and we would be happy to share, answer any of your questions. I know Mrs. O'Brien will also be providing an update to the board and to the community at an upcoming committee meeting, and she'll be walking through parts of the dashboard as well. So, we have that to look forward to. Last week, there were so many opportunities to see our LPS students shine. I'm just gonna highlight a few of them. A number of us had the pleasure of attending the LPS, or, I'm sorry, the Young Inventors Showcase, which was co-hosted by the Livonia Chamber of Commerce, Schoolcraft College, Alpha USA, Rotary, and Kiwanis. We had hundreds of middle school students who were inspired initially by a pretty amazing race car driver, Danny, I think it's DeKaiser is his last name. I had the, Mr. Archibald and I had the pleasure of seeing him kick off the event last fall at Emerson. He went to each of the middle schools in our city, in Clarenceville, and in Wayne Westland, and inspired the kids to think about themselves as inventors. And we actually had hundreds of students within Livonia Public Schools submit their ideas for an invention that would solve a problem or be something that may be of interest to the greater community. From that, there were a number of judges that took a look at those inventions, and 15 students from Livonia, as well as students from each of those other two school districts, were selected to be part of the Young Inventors Showcase last week. So, we had over 200 community members come together, and each one of those students had a chance to get up in front of the crowd, and they did an amazing job spending about a minute or two talking about their invention or their idea, and then they were recognized for their efforts. So, we want to commend all of our students who submitted an invention and recognize all of those who were honored last week at the showcase. So, it was pretty neat. I know for those of you who were there, we were, you know, our socks were all blown off. The winning invention, because I know you're all questioning what that was, the winning invention was a young lady who had invented the idea of a car seat. You know, when you're trying to get the toddlers who are squirming and get them out of the car seat, you've gotta push that button just in the right place, and it was a fingerprint-activated release of that. So, the child couldn't do it themselves, and you didn't have to wrangle with it. It was a pretty neat invention, but there were a number of different great ideas, and we're just so proud of our students who shared their ideas with the crowd. LPTSA hosted their annual reflections program last week, and Mrs. Jarvis was the emcee. She did a terrific job of entertaining us for the evening. And so, students submitted entries. Would you remind me what the theme was? Is it Reach?
The theme this year was Within Reach.
Within Reach, okay. So, students may have submitted a musical composition, a dance choreography, a written piece of literature, visual arts, photography, or film and video, something that captured that theme. And so, students were recognized at Stevenson High School, but from all of our schools, where we had students participating. So, congratulations to all of those students who attended. We also had a number of our art teachers in attendance, who I know were instrumental in encouraging their students to participate. Last Friday, a number of us had an opportunity to attend Nijiiro's Moshi Tsuki Party. Is that correct? Did I say that correctly? It is a traditional Japanese celebration and includes the pounding of the rice. It is quite an event, I'm telling you right now. It was very exciting, and I just wanted to thank Mr. DeLuca for the invitation, as well as the staff who participated. And there were truly dozens of parent volunteers who assisted the students with the process of pounding the rice, but also who made hundreds of plates of different rice dishes for all of the students and all of the staff to try. So, it was a pretty special event. And although we talked earlier this evening about the car show happening downtown, there was a pretty exciting one happening at Randolph Elementary on Friday. Our students created model cars as part of a cross-content project they'd been working on for a number of weeks. They created cars and designed them and did time trials and talked about, you know, the force and motion, and did some time trials on how their cars were able to, you know, to move forward. And they just, they really just mesmerized us with their inventions. So, we had many opportunities to see our students shine last week, and we thank all of our staff who helped plant those seeds and helped nurture them along the way. So, two more quick notes, as we begin, if you believe it or not, we're just starting into the second semester after finals wrap up this week, but we're already planning ahead for next year. So, kindergarten registration opens up February 1st at our K-4 schools, and we're doing something new this year. We're offering a Saturday kindergarten registration as a service to our families. So, on February 24th...
24th.
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 February 24th, just to be sure to get the date correctly out there to folks. Saturday, February 24th, at Riley Upper Elementary School, we're going to be opening up and registering for families from any of our K-4 schools. So, again, you're welcome to register at your child's homeschool, but just to make it a little bit more convenient for folks who can't get here during the day, we'll be hosting registration for our families at Riley. We'll have a number of our staff there, and so, we're excited about that. And then, finally, our high schools are gonna be hosting ninth-grade parent information nights this week, and I believe we have one next week. Is that correct?
Two this week on Thursday.
Okay. Two this week on Thursday and one next week. Those are always big nights. If you've ever had an eighth grader, you know this is a big night of transition. And so, we look forward to not only welcoming in our current eighth-grade students and their families, but also members of the community who may not have a child in our schools at this time, but would like to learn more about our high schools and their exceptional offerings. We invite you to join those parent information nights. There's more information on our website and on our school's website. So, thanks for letting me share that, President Johnson, and we wish you all a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. And at this point, we're gonna take a short five-to-10-minute break to talk to our students, and we will be back. We are in recess. Thank you. We're back, and we will continue with our agenda. We are down to Item 3E, Written Communications. I don't have any written communications. Are there any written? Seeing none. We'll move on to 3F, Audience Communications. Audience Communications is a time where the board listens to any of the concerns that may come before us. It's not a question-and-answer period. The board will not answer questions. This is limited to three minutes per person, and there's a reason for that, and that is to make sure that everyone has an equal opportunity to address the board. If we give more than one, more than three minutes to one person and not three minutes to another person, it just doesn't seem fair. So, we like to keep it to three minutes. That is our board policy. Mrs., I was normally the timekeeper in the past, but I won't be doing that. Mrs. Bonnefield has offered to do that, and we will just hear an audible sound when you get to your three minutes, and we ask that you respect that time. I have two blue slips tonight. The first one is John Stimek.
Close enough, Stimek.
Stimek? Okay, if you wanna step forward. Good evening, Mr. Stimek.
Good evening. As you mentioned, my name's John Stimek. I've been a resident of Livonia for 17 years, and I have two students at Webster, a second grader and a fifth grader. And I'm here tonight to ask for your help in solving a problem, a problem that was created due to LPS blessing time change that went into effect January 8th. It was communicated to me the first time on December 22nd, when my son came home from school and handed me a sheet of paper from the bus driver, which said, "By the way, your bus time is changing. It's moving up another 10 minutes, roughly." So, for those of you who aren't aware of the change, two routes were added to the bus AS morning shuttle, and the bus pickup times, as I mentioned, were moved up. So, now you have, with this change, now you have six-year-old kids and older elementary school kids in our neighborhood being asked to be at the bus stop at 6:49 a.m. to attend school that starts at 8 a.m. This is one hour and 11 minutes from the time that they're being asked to be at the stop to when school starts. So, this is unacceptable for many reasons, but I'm gonna touch on three, three most important. One, it's not developmentally appropriate. So, if you do the math, 6:49 bus pickup time, right? So, most kids get up roughly a half hour to an hour before their bus pickup time or when they need to be at the bus stop. So, you now have a sixth grader, or, sorry, sixth grader or a six-year-old waking up at 5:49 a.m. in the morning to get ready for school. So, if you do the math and you think about, okay, what time should a six-year-old go to bed? Nine to 12 hours of sleep, right? That's if you Google it. That's developmentally appropriate. So, now I have a six-year-old who I'm asking, "Can you please go to bed at around 5:50 p.m.?" A lot's going on at 5:50 p.m. They get home from school like around 3:45. So, that's the number one reason why it's unacceptable. Number two is safety. You have kids, I'm lucky that I can walk my kids to the bus stop. That's not true for every kid that comes to our bus stop. You have kids walking to the bus stop 6:45 to get there by 6:49, to catch a bus, to... You have kids walking to the bus stop 6:45 to get there by 6:49 to catch a bus, to start school at eight o'clock. And then so the obvious reason it's unacceptable is one hour and eleven minutes to travel six miles. If you Google that, that should take you about fifteen minutes. Granted, we have the transfer station. That's another step in the process. But one hour and eleven minutes, way too long. Unacceptable. So this situation doesn't have to be this way. When my son started Webster in 2013, bus pickup time was 7:20. Not bad, you know? It's forty minutes before school starts. I thought that that was okay. But this system is not working. Kids are not getting to the transfer station on time. I've got proof. And you also have bus drivers that are crammed to try to fit in more stops in this route. So I look forward to seeing you on February 12th. You've got a great team here. You'll find a good solution. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stimek.
I'm so sorry.
We're having a technical issue.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. I got it down now.
All right. We have a Susan. Is it Kenai?
Kenai, correct.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you all. Before I start, I just want to clarify. This concern that I'm coming tonight to share with you is separate from the upper elementary time change and that bus scheduling. This concern is that there's an additional change that the Transportation Department made when they decided to do that upper elementary time change busing. They decided to also eliminate a route in the south side of Livonia. Therefore, those bus stops got distributed to two other south-end shuttle routes. Therefore, that led to routes being added to my children's bus route and the times being changed. I'm not going to repeat what my husband, John, said, but I agree with everything he said. Mainly, it is, you know, it's not appropriate. It's not, it's not fair to ask students to get up and ride that bus for that long. As something else I learned and I gained from this experience, some awareness about the perception of LPS Transportation Department. I have the opportunity to volunteer at Webster quite often. I'm also on the PTA Board at Webster. I'm involved in many activities in the Livonia area with my children. And I, what worries me is the perception of Livonia Transportation with other parents out there. And I'm always been an LPS advocate. I was out there campaigning for the bond issues. I'm an educator myself. I'm a public school advocate, I believe, in the LPS system. And the education they provided has been A-OK so far. But again, I worry about the perception. I worry about the perception with all these changes mid-year. It was a lot for the public to take. And as you know, you probably checked the Facebook sites. You hear the grumblings. You've probably been contacted by others. I just don't want it to come to the point where next time there's a renewal of a bond issue or a new bond issue, or even the idea of bus driver privatization, that people are going to forget about all the good and they're going to remember this situation. Again, I'm an advocate for LPS, and I know we can work together to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I do not have any more blue slips. Is there anyone else that wants to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. Item 3G, response to prior audience communication. I have one item that I would like to address. At one of our, I think it was our last voting meeting, we had a parent in from Grant. And I just wanted to address that and indicate that both in the fall and prior to the holiday break, we had three members of our cabinet team, that would be Dr. Terrio, Mrs. Scott, and Mr. Francis. They met at Grant to walk each area of the school, which included the classrooms, the hallways, storage areas, community rooms, and the auxiliary areas with Mrs. Keats. We've identified plans to address the playground and the playpad areas at the school, as well as continuing to study the traffic flow and the parking lot usage. In addition to reviewing the physical needs of each school facility, we understand a significant study of the academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students last spring to make budget recommendations that the board undertook. As a result of that, Grant Elementary received an additional full-time elementary support teacher and additional student learning assistance, in addition to other assistance that we received. We would also encourage the, if parents have an issue, in particular in this case, please see Mrs. Keats or any other administrative personnel at the school. They are the first line that will help you. But we needed to make sure that community was aware that these issues are being addressed. Thank you. That will move us on to item four on our agenda, consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of December 18th, 2017. 5B, minutes of the special meetings of January 16th, 2018. 5C, minutes of the closed session of January 16th, 2018.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes. Could you please pass down your special moments? Thank you. That will move us on to item six, instruction matters. 6A, limited schools of choice for 2018, 2019. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent to participate in limited schools of choice under Section 105 and 105(c) for the 2018-19 school year. Openings to include up to thirty students at kindergarten, up to fifteen students in grades one through three, five, and six. Up to twenty students in grade four, and up to eighteen students in grades seven and eight. Up to five students in each Global Ed and Kappa in ninth grade only, for a total of up to 171 students.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Is, Mr. McDonald is going to address this.
I have Mrs. Scott with me, too. She may be on the other side of that.
I see Mrs. Scott behind the pole.
Hi.
Yeah, if I can, I'll offer a little bit of background information regarding limited schools of choice and our history with Livonia Public Schools. Livonia Public Schools has participated in the limited schools of choice since 2014. And we participate in two programs, Sections 105 and Sections 105(c). Section 105 is for any non-LPS-boundary student living with inside Wayne County. And Section 105(c) is for any student residing in any of its contiguous counties touching Wayne, which would be Macomb, Monroe, Oakland, and Washtenaw. Per the state guidelines, we must designate at least one of the following: a specific program, a specific grade level, or a specific school. We do not need to necessarily designate multiple areas, but we do have to designate at least one. We must provide notice to the general public. We will do so through the use of social media, our website, and other traditional means of marketing and communication. If we have more students apply than seats available, we will conduct a lottery. Prior to that lottery being conducted, we will look and pull out all applicants who have a sibling currently attending Livonia Public Schools, and they will be given first priority. If the student is not selected to be part of that initial group, they are then added to a waitlist in the order that they are selected from the lottery. We do not provide any transportation to any Section 105 or 105(c) student. We will receive the lesser of the foundation allowance between the sending school district and our foundation allowance. As previously noted, we are asking for 171, or we are recommending for 171 seats amongst grades one through eight, and in ninth grade only at Kappa and in Global Ed. If completely filled, this would bring additional revenue in the neighborhood of $1,368,000. Looking at our history and knowing we could hopefully expect about 82% of those seats being filled, that would bring our revenue to $1,120,000. We must designate a 30-day, 15 to 30-day window. We always elect the 30-day window. And we would propose that that would be from February 28th through March 29th.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Centers.
Thank you. You did a very nice job of describing the process. Could you tell us a little bit about how students have come into our district, have adapted, and how they're doing overall?
If I put 100 students up and 15 of them were school-of-choice students, you wouldn't be able to pick out those school-of-choice students. Once they become a student in Livonia Public School, they're just like every other student in Livonia Public School. They just reside outside of Livonia.
So overall, they're adapting well academically and socially? They're doing well?
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Bonnefield.
Could you just talk a little bit about why we've added extra students seemingly at the grade-four level?
Absolutely. So our current grade-three is one of our smaller cohorts of students right now. So we'd be looking to build upon that cohort as they go through and become one of the two grades at the five, six, and seven, eight level. We want to start to build that so that we don't see a significant drop in those years.
Thank you.
Mrs. Burton.
We've gone over some of this in our study session and our committee of the whole. But for the benefit of the public, will you address our declining enrollment and how this is designed to backfill some of that?
Sure. So right now, what we're seeing is our graduating classes, our senior classes, are larger than our incoming kindergarten classes. So that's why we're seeing still that trend of declining enrollment. It's shrinking. It's not as great as it was four, five years ago. But we still see a little pattern there where our exiting class is smaller than our incoming class. Bringing in these students, 171 or any number a little bit lower than that, works to offset that. And we do so in, as we make our recommendations, we're looking to put students into the classes of those cohorts' grade levels, knowing that we would not need to add additional staffing to that. So without any additional expenses, we can look at this as simply revenue.
And then once, first off, do students get to choose which building they go into?
Students do not get to choose what building they go into. We do consider if they have a sibling. We definitely want to keep them in the same building as their siblings when possible, in addition to the same triad when possible. But some buildings are going to be closed, and some buildings are going to be closed at certain grade levels. So they don't necessarily get to choose. Mrs. Scott and I both will take a look at where the student resides as well, knowing that, you know, if a student's residing very close to one school, to travel across town to another school's not a good situation for that family. So we try to find a school with openings that are close in proximity to where they reside.
Okay. And then as far as students who are already, geographically, they live in Livonia Public Schools' boundaries. If those students are requesting a transfer from one building to another, can you cover that for the public?
Yeah, so that gets commonly called in school-of-choice. School-of-Choice is really this program for the out-of-district schools. Those were the in-district transfer requests. We do have forms on our website that folks can request to transfer within our district, as long as they are a resident in Livonia or Westland that is part of Livonia Public Schools. And we would address those typically in early April. We will do our first shot at looking at those for the following school year. And then we build a waiting list from there. And then we'll start to address those as our staffing kind of finishes out there in August, and we know exactly where our spots are.
And then our, when we're placing students in the classrooms, are we allotting enough space for students to move into the district, say, over the summer or whatever?
Absolutely. We have all that in consideration, knowing that we do tend to lose a couple students here and there to move out, but we also get a couple students in. And we always make sure we have enough room to accommodate those students who are moving into our district as well.
Okay. So this, we're basically, we're covering the needs of the folks who live, who are residents of the district first.
Absolutely.
And then the space that's available where we can fill in, in order to minimize some of the declining enrollment. We're backfilling with some of the students from out of the district.
Absolutely. Well said.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other questions, comments? Mr. McDonald, I may have missed it. My understanding is if an applicant already has a sibling in the school district, that student would get priority?
That is correct. Yes. So if, say, we had, at the kindergarten level, we had sixty applicants and we have thirty seats, that's going to require us to do a lottery. So we would literally pick one at a time, every student out of that pack until all of them have been picked. However, if there are students that have siblings already attending Livonia Public Schools, that student would have a priority. So we would pull those kids out first, and then we'd start the lottery from there.
Thank you. Anything else? And Mrs. Burton.
Mr. McDonald, will you go over, again, this is something we talk about in our committee of the whole, but for, so the public clearly understands. What if we run into a situation where we have, say, slightly over the allotted amount that we're approving tonight? And what our options are in terms of taking a whole group and not a mid-range number between our allotted, between our approved number tonight and that whole group that applied?
Sure. If we, at a particular grade level, if we are able to accept and fill all the seats and we still have kids on the waiting list, and we have enough room for them within our schools, we can come back to the board and ask to consider allowing all of them. We can't take a specific number of them, but we can take all of them. So if we had 10 remaining on the waiting list, we couldn't say, "We have five more seats. Let's take five more." But we could come back and say, "We have 10 kids on the waiting list. We have enough room for all 10. We'd like to request to be able to have all 10 join Livonia Public Schools."
So there is a slight chance that you may come back to us between now and September and ask for a bump up, but that would have to be to the maximum number of students in that grade or program that applied?
Correct. And there's certain timelines that we have to adhere to with the state as well with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield for the approval of Eliminant Schools of Choice program for 2018, 2019, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes. That'll move us. Mrs. Oakwest.
Thank you. President Burton, President.
We'll get used to it yet.
It'll take a little time. President Johnson. Now that the board has approved this recommendation, Mrs. Scott and Mr. McDonald have all of the information ready to go onto our website tomorrow. And so we will have this information updated on our Livonia Public Schools' website under the Parents tab for any community member who's interested. That's correct.
That's the plan.
Yes. Okay. We did, I know we discussed.
We discussed that's the plan.
And then, so we'll have all the information, the background, so families know and are aware at which grade levels we're accepting students, and they can prepare for that. And then once the application window opens is when we can take the applications here at central office. But we will have the information up right away on our website, so that we have already begun receiving calls. Because as you know, we've been utilizing this very limited program for a number of years as a way to mitigate our declining enrollment and to supplement our budget. And so folks are eager to hear if the board has approved that for this year. So we will get that information out to the community as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. Mrs. Burton.
Mrs. Oakwest, what other ways are we utilizing to get this out to our community? Are we sending this information home with our current students so they can let other folks that they know be aware of it?
What we do is we will have this on our district website. We'll also post it in the local newspaper. We always put an ad in Livonia Observer &amp; Eccentric. We'll also have as part of our marketing campaign for the We'll also have as part of our marketing campaign for this, this year, we'll have it in the Big Book of Education from Metro Parent and we have a wide variety of, of offerings via social media, et cetera, to get the word out because as you may recall, it won't just be on the offerings at kindergarten through eighth grade, but we will also have schools of choice offerings for ACAT, Maycat, the International Baccalaureate Program at Franklin and Nigieiro. Each of those will have their separate windows and we'll be providing the board with more information on that, but all of that will be part of the ads that we put out to the community in addition to having this information available on our site.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything else? Nope. All right. That will take us to item seven, Business Matters, and seven A is Approval of Services for Roofing Design and Quality Control. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton, Johnson.
It's going to take a while. Mr. Centers.
Move that the Livonia Public Schools, School District Board of Education approve the recommendation of the owner's representative, Plant, Murray and Cressa, to award the contract for roofing design and quality control services for the 2018 Roofing Replacement Projects to Roofing Technology Associates, RTA, Livonia, Michigan, for a total cost of $70,000 and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contract.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis, are you addressing us tonight?
Yes, President Johnson.
Only one item?
Only one item for your inaugural meeting. Thought we'd ease into it with you. Want to just address the, the, based upon the lengthy discussion we had at last week's Committee of the Whole meeting, just to give a, a brief summation, that based upon the age and the current conditions that our current roofs across the district are in, and that is based upon a report that we commissioned to have the roofs begin, the roofing projects begin in the summer of 2018. The first step in that is this proposal to have Roofing Technologies Associates, RTA, be engaged to be the design team for the roofs this summer of 18 and also work as the quality control, to be the consultants for LPS and be on-site during the summer to ensure that, much like when an architect designs a building and they come on-site to ensure that what they drew is actually coming to fruition properly as, as designed, RTA would act in that sense as well, making sure that how the roof was, were designed would be adhered to through the process. So this is for the $70,000 to authorize the board authorizing that engagement of RTA to design and then carry through on that, follow through with the project.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers for Approval of Services for Roofing Design and Quality Control, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes. That'll take us to item eight A, Personnel Matters, Teachers for Tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools' School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and acknowledge that tenure status has been granted to the following teacher effective on the respective date, Christine Placinta, January 7th, 2018.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Archibald.
Thank you, President Johnson. The teacher named in this motion has successfully met the requirements for a probationary teacher to be granted tenure. This is including years of service and job performance as indicated through the annual year-end evaluation process. We are asking that the Board, Board of Education acknowledge that this individual has achieved tenure status.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford for, to grant tenure status to this particular teacher, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes. That takes us to item eight B. This is just for board notice and there's no motion required, so that will take us to item eight C, Resolutions for Appreciation for Employees Who Are Retiring. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools' School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Lori Field and Brenda Torre.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton. Mr. Archibald?
Thank you again, President Johnson. Tonight, we bring before you the names of two paraprofessionals who will be retiring. These individuals leave with a combined 43.9 years of experience. On behalf of the district, I'd like to thank these individuals for their years of dedicated service to the students of Livonia Public Schools, wish them all the best in retirement and ask that the board adopt the attached resolution of appreciation in their honor.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions, comments from the board?
Congratulations. And thank you for all the service.
Absolutely. We have a, a motion by Mrs. Frank to accept the resolutions of appreciations for employees who are retiring, supported by Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to item eight D, Appointment of High School Assistant Principal. I have a motion, please.
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools' School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Tara Woodruff as High School Assistant Principal at Franklin High School.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Oakley, or?
Start with Mr. Archibald and then I'll wrap it up.
Mr. Archibald first?
Thank you again, President Burton. Absolutely delighted, as you know, we.
You said Burton.
Two out of three, I'll take.
Yeah.
I'm still delighted.
You know, it's three years, three years.
We'll get it right. We'll make it a group effort.
Let's start that again. Mr. Archibald?
Thank you, President Johnson. As you know, we filled three very important administrative vacancies last week and some would say we saved perhaps the best for last. Tara Woodruff comes to us from the Crestwood School District with nearly 12 years of experience as a teacher and administrator. She has a Bachelor of Science degree in mathematics from Madonna University, a Master's of Science and Educational Leader, Leadership from Concordia University, 10 years experience as a teacher of mathematics with Crestwood and has been an assistant principal at Crestwood High School for the last year and a half. In talking with folks from the district and, and looking hard to find someone who would say something unflattering about her, was not able to do so, and I asked. Simply said by one of the former principals I talked to, I've worked with a lot of administrators and I simply don't think you can do any better. So with that, and also perhaps a homecoming of sorts, Mrs. Woodruff is a graduate of Franklin High School. So I look forward to this appointment and I'll turn it back over to the superintendent.
Thank you so much. We are really, we really are thrilled to be bringing the recommendation for Mrs. Woodruff to join our administrative team, not only in LPS but at Franklin High School. She is extraordinarily highly regarded, not only within Crestwood, but actually by, was recommended to us by a number of current LPS staff and administrators as well. Her reputation precedes her at Franklin. She was an outstanding student and three sport athlete and I know that they are thrilled to have her patriot pride coming back home to Franklin. We feel, we felt throughout the interview process as we were going through that, both for our assistant principals at the middle school and at the high school, as well as the Franklin High School principal position, we had the opportunity to talk to a number of truly outstanding individuals, committed educators, committed administrators, and I have to say that Tara truly impressed us on many levels. Her, her commitment to students and, and their well-being, her relationships with staff, all of which were confirmed by, by the leadership in, in her district. And we are thrilled to be recommending her to join the Franklin administrative team. We believe they are ready to get things moving and continuing in the outstanding direction that they have been headed for a number of years. So we are very proud to bring this recommendation to you this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley. Questions or comments from the board? All I can say is if she's a graduate of Livonia Public Schools, why was there a question at all? All right. We have a, a motion to approve the High School Assistant Principal appointment by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Would you take the role, Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes. Congratulations.
First, I'd like to take the opportunity to say thank you to Superintendent Oakley and Mr. Steve Archibald and all the interview teams to make it such a positive interview experience, to make sure that I was a good fit for LPS and LPS was a good fit for me. Thank you, President Johnson. And the Board of Education for, for giving me the opportunity to bring my educational expertise and administrative experience back to LPS. When I walked in late last week into Franklin to meet with the Franklin admin team, it was like a feeling of nostalgia. It smelled the same, it looked the same, it just felt right. And after meeting with them, I knew it was the right place to be. Many of the staff members that I had at Franklin are currently still working there and they played such a vital role in a posit, in positively impact my passion for education. So to have the opportunity to work with them again is just amazing. I'd likely quickly thank my husband, Chris, who's here. My children, Peyton and Carter, are hopefully sleeping, even though they wanted to see Mama on TV, but hopefully they're sleeping tonight. I'd like to thank Mr. Pacey and Mr. DePonyo for being here tonight as well. I know it's a late night for them. So thank you all again and I look forward to serving Franklin and the Livonia community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always nice when one of our former students comes back. That'll move us on to item nine, Hearing from Board Members. We have a number of policies up for first reading tonight. Mrs. Oakley, do you just want to work through those?
I will, along with a little help from my friends to the right. But I will kick us off, President Johnson, on Board Policy KC. It is the item entitled Board Community Relations. As we've discussed at the study session and the committee meeting and the policy you have in front of you, we made some modifications to this board policy. What I'd like to do is just simply indicate the phrases or sentences where there are changes. So the new opening sentence of this policy reads, "It is the policy of the Board of Education that the community be regularly informed of the objectives, achievements, value and condition of the school district." In addition, we modified the third bullet to read that board members shall communicate to the community the result of formal board action. In the final bullet that was added, the board shall communicate to other board members and the superintendent expressions of public reaction to board policies and school programs. So again, as you know, we're in the process of reviewing each one of our policies within the school district and this is one that some revisions had been recommended and we'd like to bring it to you here this evening for the first reading, so we are not requiring action on this. We welcome any comments or feedback from the board and then we will bring it next month for a second reading and a potential board action via vote on this item.
Any questions or comments at this time? Mrs. Burton?
Only that this is not anything new to, the, the concepts are not new to Livonia Public Schools or to this Board of Education and some of them, as a matter of fact, are even repeated in such things as our Code of Ethics for the board, for the board itself, but rather this is cleaning up of language to make sure it's consistent.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. And I should have indicated at the outset, these items that are up for first reading, there is no board action on these. They will come up for a second reading at the next regular meeting. Okay. Then we go to item nine B, First Reading of Board Policy EF, Accessibility of Online Content.
Thank you, President Johnson. I am bringing forward to you a new policy that we have discussed at the previous study session and committee of the whole regarding accessibility of our online content. Again, we recognize the importance of having our digital content on our website accessible to all members of our community. And a summary of the new policy is that it states our technical standards we use in determining the accessibility of our online content. We designate a web accessibility coordinator to ensure the implementation of the policy. Procedures the district will follow to ensure compliance with these standards, including staff training and any grievance procedures for accessibility concerns that the community may have. And as stated before, that this policy has been reviewed by our district's attorney as well as the Office of Civil Rights. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Tara. Questions or comments?
Dr. Tara, this was required by state law, is that right?
This was required as part of a corrective action plan for an Office of Civil Rights complaint filed against the district. So this is our corrective action plan to satisfy the requirements with the Office of Civil Rights.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other comments, we'll move on to item nine C, The First Reading of Board Policy JDAA, Physical Restraint Removal of Policy. Dr. Tara?
Correct. President Johnson, as stated at the previous two meetings, Board Policy JDAA, which outlines students' physical restraint, is now subsumed under Board Policy JDAA, which if you recall, is new state policy regarding the emergency use of seclusion and restraint. In March of 2000, March of 2017, the state set forth new guidelines and after meeting with our RESA committee, you were able to adopt the policy on August 21st, 2017 with the state recommendations. So we are requesting that Board Policy JDAA be removed.
Thank you, Dr. Tara. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, that will be up next month as well. That takes us to item nine D, First Reading of Board Policy JAA, Equal Educational Opportunities. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. Share the, I will share the changes to Board Policy JAA, Equal Educational Opportunities for Students, as has been discussed at prior meetings. Board Policy JAA prohibits unlawful discrimination of students. All the content remains the same. The only change is a clarifying statement naming who receives the complaints, with the Director of Student Services being appointed as the Civil Rights Coordinator regarding complaints of disability and handicap discrimination. And the Director of Human Resources has appointed the Civil Rights Coordinator regarding, regarding all other complaints of discrimination. There's also a clarification in the legal reference, has also been changed to Civil Rights Act and Americans with Disabilities Act. So I bring forward Board Policy JAA, recommending approval of the stated changes at a future meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Any questions or comments from the board on this policy? Seeing none, we will move on to item nine E, First Reading of Board Policy JCDBA, Prohibiting Gang Activity. And, Mrs. Scott?
Yes, thank you. I also bring forward Board Policy JCDBA, Prohibiting Gang Activity. I also bring forward Board Policy JCDBA prohibiting gang activity. The policy describes the types of activities that may cause fear, intimidation, or distraction in school. The rule against gang activity is included as a prohibited act. All the content remains the same. The only change within the policy is the penalty for violation, which now ranges from warning to expulsion, as changed in August 2017 for Board Policy JD. I recommend approval of Board Policy JCDBA with the stated changes at a future meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Questions or comments from the board on this policy? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine F. Now we're into the second reading of Board Policy IFC, instructional materials, textbooks, and equipment selection adoption. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the LaVonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy IFC, instructional materials, textbooks, and equipment selection slash adoption.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes, this policy was brought to the December 18th, 2017, board meeting for its first reading. It has language changes, adding the word textbook to instructional materials, and a paragraph describing how instructional materials will be periodically reviewed by committee.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton to adopt Board Policy IFC, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes. That moves us to item nine G, the second reading of Board Policy JBCB, non-resident students. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the LaVonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and adopt Board Policy Language per the attached document for Board Policy JBCB, non-resident students.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Scott, are you going to address this for us?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson.
Thank you.
As was shared previously with the board, we are recommending approval for the changes to Board Policy JBCB to reflect current law and practices. The new language was added to say that the Board of Education will consider out-of-district school of choice students in specialized programs and through limited school of choice options, only if doing so benefits resident students by preserving programs. There's also language from Board Policy JBCBA was also taken to clarify the term tuition fees, and we recommend approval, adoption of the stated changes to Board Policy JAA. Sorry, JBCB, sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis to adopt Board Policy JBCB, non-resident students, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Johnson? Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. That takes us to item nine H, Superintendent Evaluation. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the LaVonia Public Schools School District approve the evaluation of Superintendent Andre Oakwist, completed by using the MASB evaluation tool, for which she received a highly effective rating.
Support.
I sort of heard Mrs. Frank, so... We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Frank. We have to, by law, evaluate the superintendent on an annual basis, and it is required that superintendent of school be evaluated annually by the Board of Education using an approved evaluation instrument. Our Board of Education has gone through the required training on the MASB Superintendent Evaluation Instrument, and have recently concluded the evaluation of our superintendent, Mrs. Andre Oakwist. Superintendent Oakwist has received a rating of highly effective. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please make sure that this is entered into the minutes?
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
In addition to the very thorough evaluation that we went through with Mrs. Oakwist, I would just like to point out to some members of the public, in case you are not as aware as some of those of us in this room, how very, very fortunate we are to have Mrs. Oakwist as our superintendent. She is supremely qualified. She has a passion for this district that is rivaled by none. She is, in addition to being very, very personable, she has reached out to virtually every corner of our district. It is, it's almost rare anymore, if we're in a building and we don't have someone approach us as board members, and comment on what a terrific superintendent we have, which we absolutely know inside this district. Outside of the district, I've had folks come up and say, "Oh, you're in LaVonia, you have Mrs. Oakwist." To which we answer, "Keep your hands off of our superintendent."[1003.13][1003.13][laughter] On top of being very, very personable, Mrs. Oakwist is extremely knowledgeable about education. She has incredible passion for making sure LaVonia Public Schools stays on top of their game, and she's grown immeasurably in areas that weren't necessarily her natural forte when she came into the role. One of the areas in which we've seen incredible leadership from Mrs. Oakwist is legislatively. And that is one of the areas that you don't think of necessarily unless you're intimately involved with the Board of Education or a cabinet or administrative team. You think of running an education organization, managing people, managing dollars, but in the state of Michigan, you also have got to be able to legisla, to manage the whole legislative process, unfortunately. And we are here to thank Mrs. Oakwist for just doing a stellar job in all of these areas. We are immeasurably blessed to have your leadership, and we hope you stay on the job for a very, very long time. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Couldn't have said it better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We all appreciate it. And anybody who knows Mrs. Oakwist, she is omnipresent. I think there are more than one of her.[1081.65][1081.65][laughter] All right, we have a motion by Mr. Centers to approve the superintendent's evaluation, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. And President Johnson?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
That will bring us to item nine I, hearing from board members. As it has become customary with this board, instead of having seven people repeat the same thing over and over again, we have decided that one individual will speak for the board, although at the end of that person, anyone who wants to chime in and has additional things to say, we always invite that. Tonight, we'll be hearing from Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Johnson. Tonight, we began the evening with a short meeting during which we elected officers for the new year. I'd like to extend congratulations to President Mark Johnson, Vice President Colleen Burton, and Secretary Tammy Bonnefield. January is School Board Recognition Month, and we'd like to thank those who have expressed their appreciation. As a board, we're happy and proud to serve this district. We are committed to LaVonia Public Schools and to ensuring its success in the future. During our LaVonia Points of Pride session, we heard from our Skilled Trade Program at the LaVonia Career and Technical Center. These programs that we heard from tonight focus on automotive maintenance and construction. It's such a wonderful program to have, and it's so needed. Many school districts envy us these programs, and rightly so. Tonight, we heard that our automotive program is the recent recipient of a $50,000 grant from the Margaret Dunning Foundation. They're using this grant to purchase equipment to support their auto tech lab. We heard from students Maddie and Sean, who are part of the Automotive Tech Program. They're very, very good spokespeople for this outstanding program. In the construction trades, and we learned that the students in that program learn each of the trades that are related to the construction industry, and they work with the city to renovate homes that are later either sold or rented and increase our housing opportunities. Each of the students leaves that program safety certified and ready for apprenticeship, which is amazing. We heard from Allison and Gio, who spoke very highly of that program. These students tonight, and all the students in these programs, have a significant head start on their career path. Mrs. Jenkins introduced us to a partnership with various groups in LaVonia, the Healthy LaVonia Initiative. We're happy to be proud of this program that hopefully will make LaVonia one of the healthiest cities in the country, if not the healthiest city, and we're looking forward to future updates. The Michigan Department of Education has released their school dashboard. This allows parents and community members to review different measures of our schools. Information will be coming home to help you access these dashboard and learn more information about our fine schools. There was a very successful middle school Young Inventors Program. The celebration was last week. Fifteen students from LaVonia presented their inventions. I can tell you, the future is in good hands. LaVonia PTSA Council had the Reflection Ceremony. This is part of an art competition, and we honored many students throughout the LaVonia for some wonderful artwork. We're very happy to have recognized the work that they did in this year's theme, Within Reach, and to announce that the new theme for next year is Heroes Around Me. Please start your work now. Other schools had celebrations going on as well. Niji Iro had the Mositsuki Festival, also known as Things to Do with Rice. If you have biceps, bring them, and if you don't, you will leave with them after pounding rice. There was a car show at Randolph, and there were other exciting activities going on there as well. Find a little Randolph student to show you their car. And we have kindergarten roundup coming up. It seems awfully soon to be thinking about that, but if you've got a little student who's ready for kindergarten, we're ready for you. You can either send your student to, or go to, attend your local school for kindergarten roundup, or come to a special event on February 24th at Riley Upper Elementary School, and that will be open to children who are attending any school, regardless of which one is your LaVonia school. That will be on a Saturday, which is more convenient for some families. And President Johnson, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Any other comments or questions?
No, I'm sorry.
Oops.[1408.65][1408.65][laughter]
That's not all I have, by a long shot.[1411.33][1411.33][laughter]
Thank goodness the evening is coming to a close.
Right. Tonight, we approved a limited school of choice program for the next school year. This program will allow us to accept out-of-distant students into LaVonia Public Schools to fill in any remaining openings in our classes after LaVonia Public Schools enrollment is complete. Congratulations to Christine Placenta, who has been granted tenure. Congratulations also to parapros Laurie Field and Brenda Torrey, who are retiring with almost 44 years of service. That's outstanding. We wish you the best. And finally, we wish to welcome Tara Woodruff as the new Assistant Principal at Franklin High School. It's such a pleasure to welcome home one of our own. The secondary students and staff, to all of you, I wish you a happy new semester as we wrap up the old one. Spring can't be very far away. Somehow, that second semester seems to move faster than the first one. Now, President Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Any other questions or comments tonight? Mrs. Burton?
Yes. Last week, there was some important legislation that took one more step closer to becoming law, and that is the legislative Bill 574. For those of you who may not be aware, it affects the countywide enhancement millage that was just approved by the Wayne County voters just this past year. So frequently, citizens have said to members of the Board of Education and other folks in our education community, when we have needs, we can raise our taxes and pay for these needs. There is only one legal way in order to do that, and that is through a countywide enhancement millage. LaVonia Public Schools was among the other Wayne County schools that was blessed this past year, and our citizens did approve such a millage, and it was a very, very significant victory for education. That brings approximately $5 million into LaVonia Public Schools. This legislation, Bill 574, is designed to take a chunk of that money and send it to our charter schools. The reason that is of special concern to the traditional public school system is that charter schools do not have the same transportation or largely special education costs involved, and therefore, our funding of our students is very, very different. Even though every student is equally important and equally valued, our students cost a different amount to educate. This legislation is a cause of significant concern to this Board of Education and many in LaVonia Public Schools. We have reached out to our Representative Laura Cox, both before this vote and after this vote, to express our significant concern over its impact on LaVonia Public Schools. Representative Cox is working with our office right now. She has indicated to me that she would like to continue conversation with us, and we are working to try to arrange a time when she can meet with our Board of Education so that we can have continued dialogue about the importance of this specific bill and future school funding. We hope to be bringing back a date that she can meet with our Board of Education to the public very soon.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Frank?
Following up on that, I just wanted to thank you, Mrs. Burton, for your service as President of the Board. As you just heard, she's a fierce advocate for LaVonia Public Schools, and you've been the President for three years, and I know that that was longer than you had originally planned to do, but we thank you for your service as your last time in office for the beginning of this meeting. I just think it's very important for you to know how much your service has meant to this board, and how much your service has meant to LaVonia Public Schools. It is a labor of love for you. You can tell that your passion and your desire and your breadth of knowledge of the district is immense, and so you've worked with the administrative team amazingly well, and with Mrs. Oakwist, and we just thank you for being our leader as a board and for being an advocate for the students in LaVonia Public Schools. So, thank you very much. For any of the public who thinks that this is, we sit up here and talk about theories and things that happen to your kids, earlier tonight, we said we have a ninth grade open house, and then we also said we have a kindergarten roundup happening. I have a ninth grader going into high school next year, and I have a kindergarten entering LaVonia Public Schools next year, so this is real to us. So the things that we discuss, it's real to us, and I know that Mrs. Burton, as well as so many of us, have had children that go through the schools and that are living and breathing this every day. So, thank you for your service, and thank all of our staff and our administration for all that they do, because we do this because we care about our kids in LaVonia, so, thank you.
Well said. Mr. Centers?
I just want to expand just a little bit on what Mrs. Burton said. At the legislation, should you not approve of the legislation that will potentially divert money from our schools to charter schools around the county, that the governor has not signed this yet, so there's still time to encourage a veto. You can go onto his website and get the contact information, or leave a phone message or an email there.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Any other questions or comments? Again, to just follow up on that, some people want to say that this actually pits charter schools against public schools, and that is not the issue, and people have to understand that. This is purely a funding issue. It doesn't matter whether it's a charter school or some other type of school. It's a fact that our schools are funded inadequately. We just had the report come through the collaborative group up in Lansing that essentially supports that position and says, I think we get a little over 8,000 per student, and the collaborative says that the base amount, the very starting point, should be 9,500. point, should be $9,590 per student, and then you put other costs on top of that. So, we are woefully underfunded, and that is the crux of the entire problem, and until that's fixed, we will continue to have these discussions. Mrs. Okwist?
So I'll just join my colleagues here in expressing my tremendous concern about the vote that took place last week with regard to Senate Bill 574. As you know, we've spoken about this here at our study sessions, at our committee meetings. We have been very active advocates on this particular piece of legislation. Again, I'll just reiterate a couple of the key points, I believe, that were made that are really so important, that this is not a charter versus public issue. This is an issue of how schools are funded and what it costs, truly costs, to adequately educate a child in the state of Michigan. And as we take a look at the costs incurred by charter schools and public school academies versus the costs incurred in public schools, they quite simply are different. And so when we look at the per pupil funding, or if we look at sharing the per pupil funding that came through the Wayne County Enhancement Millage, a couple of the key points that Mrs. Burton made with regard to transportation costs, special education costs, another significant piece is the fact that the wide majority of those schools do not pay into MIPSers, into the public retirement system, which is a significant cost shift as well. And so while we believe in the importance of all children in Michigan receiving exceptional educational opportunities, our schools worked very, very hard to educate our voters, and we are so grateful for their support of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage, and I believe there are five other ISDs across the state who also were fortunate to have Education Enhancement Millage pass. We've talked here about so many different ways that that funding has begun to support our students, our staff, and our schools already, and we look to continue to do that. This legislation, quite simply, does not take that full picture into account, and so I would concur with Trustee Centers that it's still a time where each and every one of our voices can and should be heard with the Governor's Office on this, and continue even with our legislators who may have already cast their votes. It's important that we continue this really important conversation about school funding, especially at this point in time. At an upcoming committee meeting, I'll be sharing information with the Board and with the community on the results of the most recent study done by the School Funding Collaborative, and I think we will have some very eye-opening data to share with regard to what we, the commitment we truly need to make in the state of Michigan to every single child who receives a public education, and the importance of adequately funding our children, every child, and then having consideration for children that have additional needs. And this collaborative truly was a bipartisan effort that went through community leaders, business leaders, educational leaders, legislators, Republicans, and Democrats. This was a group of people whose sole commitment was answering the question, what does it truly cost to adequately educate a child in the state of Michigan? And they came from all different backgrounds, truly with the belief that together they could determine through significant research and work what the bottom line was for that, and we have that information. We're eager to share that, not only with our community, but with our decision-makers in Lansing, and we certainly hope that they will listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Okwist.
You're welcome.
Anything additional from the Board? Seeing none, we've come to the end of our agenda, and as if there is no other business to be brought before the Board tonight, we are adjourned. Thank you.